And to open meeting, all other committees unable to reply, but may add items presented to a future agenda. Any people there, Amanda? Amanda, you might mute it.
I'm very sorry, and there is no one else extra. Thank you.
Thank you. Priority business, this, well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mary. Yes.
Mary Shaw, eight fifty Schoolhouse Road. I have a, an issue that I'd like to find out more about, and I'm not expecting answers from you at this point, but maybe it could be on the, another agenda. Back in the COVID days, the federal government gave the various towns and school departments monies to take care of COVID issues.
Right.
And in most places, those are called Esser monies. And Esser monies were given to us, and that, one of my questions, and as I say, I'm not asking you for answers. I'd, I'd like to know whether those monies were given to the regional school district, whether they were given to Eastham for the Eastham Elementary School. It's unclear to me exactly who got the monies and who was managing the monies. Recently, unfortunately, Trump has decided that along with the Department of Education demise and Lyndon McMahon, any monies that were supposed to be allowed to be used up through 2026 are now being clawed back. And I'd like to know whether there are any monies that we haven't used, depending upon whoever received them, which is, as I said, unclear to me, whether there are any monies that we're going to have to give back under the current situation. And whether, as I say, whether the monies were given to the regional school department for the region, whether they were given to the town of Eastham for Eastham, and whether there are any monies left over. And I also understand that some of those monies were going to be going to DESI, and that would probably interfere with the ability of them to operate. And since we are in the process of having to redo the regional agreement and would need DESI to approve it for, hopefully for our next town meeting, not this one coming up, but the next one. I'm wondering whether that's going to interfere with the time timeline for that review. So I have a bunch of questions. As I say, I'm not requesting answers from you today, but I'm wondering whether this issue could be brought up at, on another next agenda, maybe.
I'll put some next agenda for you, definitely, Mary.
Thank you.
The questions, I know they can be easily answered. I don't have the answers, but I will get some for you. Have someone here can answer them all for you. But thank you for the questions. Appreciate. Okay, priority business. We are going to go into a public hearing for the purpose of discussing participation in school choice. I will need a motion to go into pri, to public hearing for this discussion. May I have a motion?
I make a motion to move into public meeting.
Okay, by Sarah, second?
Second.
Second by Devin. Any further discussion on making the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimously, we're at go, we're now in a public hearing. Apparently, there's no one here, at least online from the public for discussion. So I'll open up to the committee regarding school choice, participation in school choice. I will say mine for last. I'll let everyone, let me know how they're feeling about it. Actually, Bill, why don't we start with you, as you're the principal of the school, and the pros and cons of school choice in terms of how you feel, and if it's, you feel it would be advantageous for Eastham to participate in school choice?
Okay, and I'd be happy to speak to this.
Yes.
In regards to, you know, school choice and my opinion, obviously.
That's your opinion.
But I don't have a vote in this.
No, I know.
Yeah, I mean, as far as school choice, I mean, I, you know, again, I've been here for, this is, I'm finishing up my 10th year at Eastham Elementary. And every year, you know, we, the school committee has voted for, for, you know, not to approve school choice. I think at this point, our enrollment has stayed at a very steady place for the past 10 years. And I think the services that we're providing for the students that are right in front of us right now, I think at times, you know, depending on, you know, and it fluctuates, but depending on what, you know, what, what presents itself, who comes in and things like that. We, we have all, at this point, all that we can possibly manage, you know, with, especially with the budget season that we just went through. So as far as I'm concerned, you know, school choice at this point, I don't think would, would benefit the, the school as much as, because, you know, again, you have to discuss, how many seats are you going to actually open up for, you know, school choice? And so personally, I, I just feel, you know, we're, we're doing very well with what we have and what's in front of us. And it seems like our enrollment here in Eastham continues to be steady and consistent. But again, that's up to you folks.
Thank you. I just wanted to hear what you had.
Sure.
Thank you.
My pleasure, yeah.
Our school committee people, staff, anyone comments, thoughts?
I just, I just wonder if Eastham opened up to school choice, where are those kids coming from, other Nauset elementary schools?
Exactly.
And I, and I worry too is if, and maybe it's an unfounded worry, but if, if this would just be a slippery slope to choosing regionalization prematurely. I, I wor, I worry that that would be a premature step into making that happen.
Thank you very much. Monica, do you have any comments or thoughts?
Well, before I joined the committee, I was very open to it because I have very little knowledge. But when I discover everything that is involved, I definitely feel like we shouldn't.
Okay.
I keep it this anyway.
Thank you. Sarah, Devin's comments or thoughts at this point before we close the public session? And we'll be voting and we'll go back to school committee.
No, I would, I, I agree with the other statements. It doesn't, it, it doesn't seem like it would benefit Eastham Elementary, and it doesn't seem like there's a great demand from the community for it.
Yeah, it's that last part. I think I echo as, as folks that are trying to represent the town and the town's people haven't heard compelling requests from citizens of the town to move towards school choice. So without any of that push that anybody from the public.
Right.
Speaking to today, there's really no reason to adjust.
And I've not heard any public requests for school choice. I personally see, think we're in a good place right now. We have been all the time. I've been on the committee. And I'd hate to see it, put, put ourselves into a place could be really bending in terms of budgetary costs, which is a terrible thing to put out, but we all recognize budgetary is a large part of education. And we've got a high level of education here in Eastham. I hate to see that disturbed any way possible. With that, since there is no public comments available, may have a motion to come out of school, out of public session and go into a school committee session, again, with the purpose of voting on school choice.
I make a motion to come out of public hearing.
I'll second.
Okay, Megan, second. I will now ask you individually for your votes. Let's, or the motion, the motion will be, should we do, should we have school choice at Eastham Elementary School? So vote on that motion. Deborah?
I vote no, not to have school choice at Eastham. I vote no, not to have school choice at Eastham Elementary.
I vote no.
Devin?
Devin votes no?
No.
And Ann votes no. Unanimously, we vote against school choice. Thank you all very much. And that will be up to this committee again next year. This is an annual event, folks. Okay, priority business, let's see, the manual, the public, the Nauset Public Schools Policy Manual. You've received, I know that you've received emails with the copy sections A and D. The only change that we've made, that have been made since you saw those initially, some grammatical changes, like parents, guardians, others, that kind of thing, he, she, it, they, them. Nothing else legally has been changed at all. So I'd like a motion from someone to accept, to approve for a second reading, sections A to D of our policy manual.
I'll make a motion to accept sections A through D.
Second to Monica, okay. Any, any discussion on it, any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Ann, thank you for taking that on. Reading it is, is a big task to actually have to go through it and update it, so.
It's not just me, it's the whole committee, the whole committee worth of people.
Thank you for doing it for Eastham.
Let me tell you. All in favor, accepting it? Is this for a second reading?
Aye.
Unanimously accept it. Thank you all very much. Administrative report, a chair report, my chair report, very short. First of all, in terms, terms of virtual meetings, the last word I received, that I remember reading, I've read several of them, is that virtual meetings will be continued to be allowed, but that, as I believe, the quorum of the committee has to be present in person. In other words, like I say, one committee member could come in virtually, but the quorum has to be present in person. That may have changed since they keep coming through every week or so, the different rulings on them, but that's the way I believe the governor has written it. So if possible, please be in person, because they were stretched. The second piece is, the special ed sustainability piece we had talked about being presented at the town meeting. And I get this only from reading the Province Town Independent. I have not, yes. It was not put on our warrant, and I'm quoting the Independent now because I have no direct information. According to the Independent, Jackie Beebe, our town administrator, said it wasn't presented in time. And Brooke is talking here about that piece of it. And the financial person from town said, well, the select board has a, a fund they can use. Should we need funding if we run into issues with additional funding needs for the school? It wouldn't be a problem. I think they missed the point that we're trying to become independent of needing that funding and getting to, you know, a withdrawal from the school and to repay it. But for now, that is a dead issue for this year. Again, something that had to be presented and put onto next year's warrant, town warrant, and hopefully get into the town warrant accepted by the school population. And that's all I have. Bill, your report, Mr. Cosby.
Thanks, Ann.
So, you know, you have your report, and I'm just going to highlight a couple of things that I mentioned already in that report. Just first of all, you know, this pass, you know, from February vacation to April vacation is just a real solid, you know, eight-week stretch, right, of, of full weeks of, of teaching and learning. And I think it's been extremely productive. As I mentioned, in, in March, you know, we, we've had some fun events, and it culminated really with our, we did a family curriculum night the other night that was very well attended, lots of representation, you know, in the classrooms and, yeah, kids having opportunity to display work, you know, and show their parents. And then, you know, we had kind of this wellness corner down by the cafeteria where our nurse was and the PE teacher and our school psychologist and adjustment counselor and our kindergarten teachers. And then we had a rep from Sustainable Cape was there as well, just to share with everybody, you know, what's happening as far as health and wellness and social emotional learning. And then the library and, and art specialists, you know, had just really nice collaboration with some of the projects that were happening in the classrooms as far as writing and the artwork. And, and then also we had a new person, Leah Dower, actually, from the Eastham Public Library. She came over to meet with parents and to sign kids up and things like that. So it was just a great community event, very well attended, and we appreciate everybody coming out for that. And then, you know, grade three, four, and five successfully completed the ELA portion of their MCAS test. And grade five will do science after vacation, and then three, four, and five math will happen in May. And the school improvement plan, which I mentioned, we updated that. And the school council voted to approve it. And so I've got a finished copy of that, and I'll present that next, or give you copies of that. Correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe you actually vote on that, Ann, right, the school improvement plan?
No.
No, which is just a presentation.
Just bring it to us next month.
Yeah, so I'll provide copies of that for everybody next month. So I'm happy to take any questions, any, you know, comments about the report or anything, you know, at Eastham Elementary over the past few weeks.
Any questions, Mr. Cosby? Thank you very much, Bill, for everything.
You're welcome.
We have a very active school. It's great seeing them doing everything they get into, all the good things they get into.
Yes.
Okay, next is Kirsten. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate you being here.
No, it's absolutely my pleasure. I'm just going to do a quick update of some of the pieces of work that have been completed or are on their way from the district level. So Bill, as a principal, has had his hand in all of these. And I think, Amanda, can you share the slideshow?
Great, thank you. So and as she's getting that ready, I just want to say what an absolute pleasure it's been to work down here for the Nauset Public Schools this year. I'm very sad that I can't come back next year. But I think you're in a really good situation now and with great things to come. So teaching and learning this year, five things I just wanted to talk about a little bit. So we're going to talk about the emergency response system, the multi-tiered system of support. I have three curriculum updates, a little bit of a different professional development for educators we had this year. And then lastly, the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, which is new. Next slide, please. So the first thing is that along with our Crisis Go app that was put into place last year, we have a new emergency response guide, which is a hard copy guide. You can see a picture there. I'm also holding it up. But this is, exists in all the classrooms of Eastham Elementary. And so it has what to do in lots of different emergency situations. There's 14 or 15, I think, tabs here. So shelter procedures, stay in place, evacuation procedures, active threat, and so forth. So these are the same at every school building in Nauset Public Schools, but then there is a tab that is just specific to Eastham Elementary right here. And this is for hanging near the door in all the classrooms in all the schools so that anyone would know what to do in an emergency situation. And it goes right along with everything that's in Crisis Go. It just happens to be a hard copy instead of on folks' phones or whatever. And then along with that, we are keeping our students and staff safe by having our annual drills of emergency situations and the strong relationships we have with all of our first responders. So that's the Emergency Response Guide. The next is that we have a robust system called a multi-tiered system of support in which we use data to inform targeted instruction. So we have all these assessments that we have for students, MCAS, of course, and then iReady and so forth. Those are all put into a new dashboard called Panorama so that the teachers and administrators can, can work and see who's struggling and who needs extra support. Then we have staff people in place to give that extra support, reading specialists, math specialists, and so forth. And then we reassess and see if what we've done has been effective. So all of this is written up in the handbook that you see there. So it's done the same way, on the same timeline at all of the schools in Nauset Public Schools. And that's the standard and commitment that we make to make sure that all of our students are able to reach their potential. So that's the multi-tiered system of support. Okay, three curriculum selection updates. The first is that you know that the grades K to five Language Arts Committee last year chose the EL education for reading. That was a 20-member committee. Over $100,000 was spent for all five elementary schools to purchase the, the guides and the student books. And all of that was done with Student Opportunity Act money, so it's a grant funded completely. This school year, we've had early adopters, so teachers who wanted to, to go be the first year in teaching units and unpacking units. And the response has been really, really positive from them, and I know you've heard from Bill. And then for next year, all educators K to five will be teaching the same reading curriculum, which is EL education. So that's the first. A lot of time has been spent on that in professional development. The second is, if you can remember back to when I did an update about how we fare in Nauset Public Schools on the MCAS, lots of places looked great, but one area that did not look so great was the middle school math. So the middle school math department, the teachers, decided that they wanted a new curriculum to address this. And so we've spent this year, I've been working closely with them, selecting a new curriculum. So they've been pilot testing the two that you see there. One is called HMH Math, and the other is called Mid-School Math. This was a 15-member committee. It included all the teachers of math at the middle school and the special education teachers who also sometimes teach math, and then elementary folks and high school folks that are involved in math so that we are feeding folks and we're passing along to folks. So it was a 15-member committee. We got a grant for $25,000 to do this work from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So we were able to work with consultants called TNTP. And next Friday, or two Fridays, May 2nd, the committee will vote on which of these two curricula to go with, and then we'll have a full implementation for the following year. So it looks like they're going to vote for Mid-School Math, but we'll wait and see. And then the last curriculum implementation that we've been working on is the K to 12 Digital Literacy and Computer Science. So this is all the, everything we teach about programming, about digital footprints, about social responsibility when using digital tools, how to word process, and so on and so forth. So it's everything altogether. We had a 12-member committee that met, included the tech specialists and teachers at every school. And overwhelmingly, they decided to use a curriculum called code.org. And lots of different teachers had tried it at different points and still use parts of it. So it's familiar to most people. And then one thing I love about it is that it is free. So that is great. Unlike the math curriculum, which is probably about $100,000. So this one is free. And then to make things more hands-on for kindergarten, we also are re-doubling down on the use of the dash and dot robots. You can see a little picture of like a teal-colored robot there. And so students program that even before they can read and write with arrow signs about which way they want it to go, and then it follows those instructions. So it's really, really cool. So those are our curriculum updates. Next, we underwent a different way to do professional development for our educators this year, which was called the Professional Development Paths. So there were 15 different topics. Teachers chose one of those topics to go to for all the early release and PD days. And they could study whatever they wanted. So it was really a choice here. So some examples are there in the orange in the slide, Instructional Practices to Support Equity for All Learners. That's really how do you work best with special education students in your class. Student Engagement, having your lessons be more engaging. Looking for Equity in Grading, a book club about the anxious generation, which is what the effects of having cell phones and all this digital media have had on the mental health of our students. An Executive Function Group, that was our biggest group, which helps educators learn how to create lessons and activities so that students begin to become automatic with time management and organization. So, and so on and so forth. You can see all the topics there. It was really well received by the educators. We did a survey, and they really wanted to continue with it for next year. So the committee of, I think it's about 10 people on the Professional Development Committee is setting these up for next year. And then lastly, you are going to see a brand-new Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. So let me explain that in the past, you've had, Eastham Elementary has had its own handbook. And it references school committee policies and all the legalities, things that we have to make sure that parents are informed of, such as disciplinary laws and so forth. So it has been really tough to keep all of the different handbooks up to date and in line with the civil rights laws. So on advice of our council and also the, the Office of Civil Rights for Massachusetts, we combined this all into one Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. You can see it there. It's also hyperlinked in the, in the slides right there. So basically, what it is, is the most important school committee policies as laid out that parents would want to know about. So things like absentee, what to do if your student's absent, what's the school year, their rights as it comes to dress code and discipline, and also their responsibilities. So it's all right there. It's one document. And then at the end, we link to the websites of all the individual schools for individual school information. So that's right now being reviewed by our legal counsel to make sure everything's right. And then it'll be put before you for a vote in May, so at the May School Committee meeting. And then the last thing I should say is that every 10 years, the Office of Civil Rights does a review of every school district to make sure they are in compliance with all the civil rights laws. And this was recommended by them as well, to have one handbook with all the laws in it right up front. And that is that. Oh, I should say, parents and guardians will sign off on the Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook when they do the registration for the following school year in Aspen. At the same time, they'll also do the acceptable technology use sign off. So it's right there in Aspen. You just have to click, and you can look through all of those documents and then sign them. And that is all of them. So we still have eight, 10 weeks left of school, and there's a lot of great things to come. You can see the photos there, graduation, of course, and that senior sunrise there and so forth. So we have a lot that we want to look forward to, but just to want, I'd keep you up to date on the work that's been going on behind the scenes. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Kirsten. Any questions or comments? Kirsten, all I want to say is thank you very much for all the years' work you've put in here for Nauset. You've done an amazing job to help all of us in education, overseeing education. And I wish you much luck as you go on your way to your next phase of life.
Oh, thank you so much, Ann.
See you soon. Bye-bye.
You're bye.
Okay. All right, now we're down to reports, committee reports. And Devin, I'll let you go first, since you have the longest one.
So I, I'll just touch on the Cape Collaborative Report. That ended up finding its way into everybody's.
It did, yes.
Fantastic. I, I guess one thing to mention is the Collaborative has had a shift in, in their executive director in the last two, three months. Hope Hascombe's come aboard, replacing Paul Hilton, who's been doing it forever. And Hope's been great, the transition, as far as from what I see, from a bit on the, mostly outside, just in these committee meetings, from all the different programs that she touches on and oversees. It's wonderful in her ability to kind of communicate things clearly. And where I think she's at in the first few months has been like a listening tour and trying to take input from all these different programs that they oversee. And I think now it's going to be more of an acting, making a plan for, for the next five years. So I think the Collaboratives, certainly financially, in a steady state and in good, a good shape. But they have quite a few programs and services that they oversee that need to be managed in both the short and the long run. So the, the quarterly report is something that was new to me in that it's supposed to happen, I guess.
First one I've seen all the time we've had here.
By law, it's supposed to happen. And so learning this in our last committee meeting, that this is something that has to come to the, our group. And, well, I don't need. Uh, and while I don't need to read verbatim, uh, everything that's in the report, um, just know that going forward, every quarter, you should expect one of these reports. And for those that are sticking around and don't get to go into retirement, that if you don't see this every three months, we should sort of come back and say, you know, where's, where's that report? So we, we're supposed to get an update. So you have it now, so that's great. Um, I guess the, the, the one other piece, um, it, it's in this report, which might not be in every single one. Um, but if there are particular questions around particular programs and services, if you look to page three, you'll see a, a list of the contact information. So if your, any questions around transportation, there's a person with a name and a contact. If there's a person around a particular program. We don't have any Eastham Elementary students in Waypoint or Star programs this year, but if there's something that comes up, you know, it's easy to put the, connect the dots, as it were, to the people and the programs now. So really happy that, uh, that Hope's taken the reins and put all this wonderful communication together. And, uh, it's.
Thank you very much. Now, how about transportation? Have you have transportation?
I don't, I don't specifically on transportation.
No, ours, our.
Yeah, for Eastham.
We have, we have not, NOSA, they have not met, okay. That's no problem. Monica, have you been, so you're with the, um, parents group? Have you been to one of the meetings lately or?
No.
And a school council?
Actually, the last one I couldn't attend, but we have something really fun happening next Thursday.
And what's that?
It's gonna be a seaping pain in activity for the parents. And it's something that we've been talking about for the longest time, to find something fun, to invite the parents. And hopefully, it'll be plenty that will show up just for them to participate and know that we do more stuff than only getting together at school. And, um, I'll tell you how it is going to be because I think it's actually quite a few people that already sign up.
Very good.
You gonna bring in the painting?
Yes, let's see the painting.
Absolutely.
Next meeting, yes. Um, and school council, that's not, that hasn't happened yet, right? For this month?
The last one I couldn't.
Last one, last one was last month, right after, Thursday after our meeting last month.
Yeah, I think we're, you don't have a meeting this month, but in May.
Yeah, okay.
My microphone on. I think our last meeting is in May, but probably after our next school committee meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Um, mental health.
Yeah, we had a great meeting. It was really good. Um, it was, um, a hybrid meeting. Um, and it started off with just, um, an overview of all the mental health supports that are in all the schools in the district. Um, and then, um, kind of doing some goal setting of where the committee wants to go and prioritize, um, its work. And one of the big questions is whether or not, um, there should be a more robust mental health screening tool for the district, something that goes beyond the SEL and panorama. Maybe that panorama survey is kind of, um, a screener and then whether we need something, um, that'll get more into the weeds for, for students who might need more support. Um, it just, even that discussion, there's a lot to think about and to work out. Um, so there, I think it's a good part of the work of the committee will be looking at that. Um, Matt Kravitz is going to create a standardized reporting form for schools to report out to their school committees on anything that kind of falls under that umbrella of SEL or mental health. So we know, you know, how the schools are doing and, um, needs that they might have. Um, we're gonna look at creating a list of priority district needs to be addressed. Um, everything, looking at, you know, the impact of opiates, the impact of social media, the transitions from grades eight to nine and five to six. So if, if our committee has any, um, any ideas of what they would like to see, let me know and I can bring that to the committee or if you do, Bill. Um, another thing that, um, we want to do, it's a very, really ambitious group. It's kind of energizing.
Now, it's because you folks really go.
Yeah, yeah. Um, there are so many different resources available, um, in our towns, in our, in, in the schools. And do families, do students know how to, um, access them? So maybe looking at some kind of online menu resource board that's really easy to navigate. So if you're in crisis, you know, you're not looking high and low for the help that you need. So that's, that's another area we're looking at. We're going to reach out to, um, a high school student, ask them to be a representative on the committee. Um, Joan Sukas, um, who's on the committee, is going to make a presentation to our committee about executive function. Um, because that really can play into having strong executive functioning skills can really help, um, students with their sense of well-being and feelings of success. And then also looking into, um, the caseloads of all the school counselors, um, with the goal being to ensure that all students are getting the services that they need. You know, um, and that, um, the school counselors, um, are not overloaded. So, and then we have a meeting on the 28th, so.
Thank you very much. And I'm so glad that the time for the meeting has changed, that you can actually attend them. Very good.
Yep.
And Sarah, you have communications, I know it's one?
Yes, the, um, next meeting is actually this Thursday, but last month's meeting, we met the new, um, communications director, Joe Miller. So it's a part-time, um, position. She.
No, it was new director.
Yes, uh, so she spends, she, she had been on board doing, um, the adult education classes. And so now her other 50% of her time is, um, going to be doing the communications.
Thank you.
And, and she'll be, um, under Taylor Rice review.
And you're, that's your, you're the committee, am I correct? I've lost track of who's on what committee.
Yeah, that's it.
I don't list any brands. Um, the only committee right now that I'm on that's active is policy, which will be active until the day I retire, for me, but people will be going. Um, and we're just looking, we're doing our best to try to finalize the complete policy manual. It probably will not be totally accepted until September. The last piece may not be until September. Um, we've had some difficulty with mask typing up all the grammatical changes we've submitted to them that should have been done initially and haven't been done. Brooke is addressing it with the administrator for masks because we did, this did cost us a few dollars to get this done. And it's been, really been, like, it's a two-year process. It should have taken a year only. So hopefully we'll have another section next month and then final section will be done in September. And I can now leave knowing that it's being done at least up to this point and then just change the, adjust as needed with other policies in it.
Is the policy committee, uh, an outstanding, is it, is there always?
Those permanent subcommittee, yes.
Permanent subcommittee.
And it's those members from two, from the high school, two from the region, excuse me, and one from each of the elementary schools on the committee. And okay, the next piece of business is.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, another, like, committee question? When I was going through the policies, one of the things, um, in one of the sections said that there, I don't know if it's a, a committee, but like a legislative representative from the school committees to, to kind of be thinking about, um, um, making sure that we're on top of different legislative actions that are happening in the state. Is that, is that a committee that's?
That's not a committee, no. It's the superintendent assumes that responsibility. It, because Desi, Desi emails us automatically when there are different legislative changes made.
I think this was more like advocacy, this one was.
There was not a member that I know of.
Oh, okay.
But I will look into it, I really have never.
I would, I, that's something that intrigues me if there's, if there's.
Yeah, I don't believe there is, but let me check. There may be, and I've, again, like the communication director. I didn't realize there was one, so it's possible positions have changed. Um, let's see, with, okay. With that being said, uh, future, future agenda items. We have the student, for next month, we'll have a student handbook, um, update of the school plan from Bill, and I'm gonna get, put the financial questions, Mary had on the agenda so we get it totally explained to help Mary. Thank you very much. Now, we have approval minutes for, uh, we actually have two sets, from February and from March. And we can, if there are questions on any of them, they're actually pretty long.
I make a motion to approve the minutes from February and March, 2025.
A second to that motion? A second to the motion? Uh, any further discussion on them? All in favor?
Yes.
Hi.
Same because I was not present last.
All right, Monica's abstaining, the, all of the rest are in agreement. And now, most importantly, an adjournment motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I second that.
Monica seconds, all in favor?
Hi. Thank you.